2025, and it is, I'm gonna say, because that thought's always wrong, it is 4:45. And with that, can we get a pledge of allegiance? Would you like to lead, council member?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, can we do a roll call? And I do want to announce right now that-
Recording in progress.
We're gonna do a roll call and we're gonna announce that a council member, Morales, will not be in attendance today due to returning from Sacramento. She was held back. So she apologizes for not being here, but thanks us for being here. So roll call, please.
Councilmember Aranda?
Here.
Supervisor Curro?
Here.
City Councilmember Morales?
Is absent, for the record. Can I get an acknowledgement of certificate of posting?
The agenda was posted on March 14, 2025.
And can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the affidavit of agenda posting.
Okay, all second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
It's kind of strange with two, just so you know. It's very weird. So with that, are there any opposed? There's no opposed, so that's a 2-0 vote. And because we're not on Zoom, we don't have to do roll call. If we had Supervisor Dolores join us, we would do a roll call. So with that, we're gonna go straight, first of all, to the presentation. I want to thank staff so much for putting together this special board meeting. I appreciate their time, meeting with me, and going over stuff. I know we're not 100% where we want to be on everything, but we are, we are going to be moving into a direction, I think, that all of the members are gonna be happy with. So take it away, Selena.
If we could please pull up the presentation slides. Perfect. Okay, good evening, Chair Curro and Local Task Force members. This is a follow-up presentation to the Local Task Force February 26 regular meeting, where staff provided and presented on the recommended budget for the Integrated Waste Management Regional Agency. The LTF requested this special meeting to further review and discuss the topic further. And to better support the LTF in today's review, staff met with our Chair, Curro, for the LTF on Friday, March 14, to discuss the LTF's feedback from the February 26 meeting and to revise the format of the recommended budget. Before you is a printout of current fiscal year budget performance report pulled on March 12, and we manually added the proposed budget in the green highlighted column. The document is also linked on the agenda and attached to the meeting calendar invite as requested. Also before you is a high-level summary of the proposed budget titled Fiscal Year 25/26: Integrated Waste Management Regional Agency Proposed Budget, as well as the Recology Revenue Report, which includes the various franchise fees paid by Recology to each jurisdiction and then to the regional agency directly. These three documents will be referenced throughout today's presentation. For today and per the Regional Agency Cost Sharing Agreement, staff is seeking LTF review of the recommended annual budget, and the LTF can make recommendations before the LTF forwards the final recommended budget to their respective governing bodies for approval as part of their overall budget adoption process. And this slide before just has high-level notes from the cost sharing agreement. The regional agency members share the costs of operating the Integrated Waste Regional Agency functions. The county will perform services required per the cost sharing agreement and bill the cities and the county for their proportionate shares, which is based on population. The Local Task Force shall serve as an advisory committee to the San Bonito County Integrated Waste Regional Agency and will review its annual budget. This is just an overview of our program and services. The elected members of the Local Task Force are responsible for forwarding a recommended budget to their respective governing bodies for approval. To facilitate this review, the county will submit the proposed budget to the Local Task Force no later than April, preceding the fiscal year proposed expenditure. Okay. So the following slides, you can reference the Fiscal Year 25/26: Integrated Waste Regional Agency Proposed Budget. Again, that's high-level summary, a worksheet that we use to help us fill out the budget, proposed budget. Okay. So for Fiscal Year 25/26, the total expenditures are a little over 1.8 million for the regional agency programs and staff. Staff, and specifically, the services, supplies, and other charges are 1.1 million, and for salaried benefits, 680,000. This is a summary of the staff positions that are funded by the regional agency. 50% of the Integrated Waste Management Manager, which is myself, the 50% of the staff analysts, which we have, serving as our clerk today, since Esme is out. And we have three recycling coordinators approved or included in our proposed budget, one of which would be a temporary position and is fully grant-funded. Then there is a staff service specialist role at 80%, and the temporary employees or interns that we have at 100,000. For regional agency revenue, these include grants, recology payments directly to the county on behalf of the regional agency, and then miscellaneous revenues. So for grants, we have our city-county payment program, which is provided annually on behalf of the county and the cities. That's estimated at 27,000. For the oil payment program, that is 22,000. SB 1383 local assistance grant, that is 200,000, and that would be the grant that is helping fund that additional recycling coordinator. The recology revenue, we have recycle day. This helps fund the quarterly bulky item events at the landfill. 31,000. Household hazardous waste revenue, 280,000. This is helping fund all of the regional agency hazardous waste events. We have monthly events at the landfill, as well as the recycle days. We collect sharps and medication from the public. Anything that's not funded by the new state legislation, SB 212, would be paid with this revenue. Lastly, the illegal dumped mattress collection initiative payments. For every mattress that is illegally dumped, the county is getting $20. Frankie, please correct me if I'm wrong. $20 for those if it's occurring in the unincorporated county and 15 if it's occurring in the incorporated cities. And then just one note about this. So all of the revenue is, the expenses, revenue is deducted from the total expenditures. And you'll see that on this slide. So for Fiscal Year 25/26, the total recommended expenditures are 1.8 million, a little over 1.8 million. Deducting that revenue would total 562,000. So then billable expenses would be 1.2, a little over 1.2 million. We did remove the 5% overhead additional cost, and that is, I would just like to address that and correct my prior statement regarding the 5% overhead charge. While the 5% overhead is included in the cost-sharing agreement methodology of the proposed Fiscal Year 2006/2007 budget and has historically been used by the regional agency. That's on Page 3, Section 5 of the cost-sharing agreement. It actually states, let me pull that open. Apologies. Is there copies over here? So you should have one of these sheets before you. Perfect. This is Page 3 of the cost-sharing agreement. So Paragraph 5, actual cost is defined as the expenditures incurred by the county in providing the service as identified on the Integrated Waste Regional Agency Budget Unit less revenues received, including but not limited to grant funding. Actual cost of overhead shall be calculated using generally accepted government accounting principles as a proportionate share of the A87 cost allocated to the Integrated Waste Management Budget Unit. The proportionate share defined on a percentage basis shall be reviewed and adjusted annually. So for this proposed budget this year, we will not be including the 5%, but instead, we've worked with the auditors and our Resource Management Agency accounting staff to include the OBEP charges, cost share plan, workers' comp, overtime, as well as the retiree medical. Those are all costs that were not included in the estimated salary cost provided to us. Okay. So, following the cost-sharing agreement methodology for cost-sharing, billable expenses is based on population size. This is adjusted annually. For Hollister, these are 2024 numbers. 65.1% of Hollister would total 814, 830 for the billable expenses to Hollister. San Juan Batista would be at 3.1%, 38,801. For San Bonito County, 31.8% of the population. Billable expenses would be 398,028. Of course, if we do not spend the funds, that would not be billed to you. These are just max thresholds. Okay. So for revenue, this is the 2024 data. You can refer to the revenue report that you have before you. You'll see it broken into jurisdiction and then the revenue that's directly paid to the regional agency. So total fees paid to City of Hollister is on that bottom line of the Hollister section. For the County of San Bonito, it has its section, the bottom line. And then San Juan Batista as well. So for Hollister, the recology franchise fees are a little over 1 million. San Juan Batista, 83, close to 83.5,000. San Bonito County is 560, close to 563. So we wanted to share this information with you because the revenue received, just based on the recology revenue, as our exclusive hauler, exceeds the expenses of the programs. And these numbers do not include the non-exclusive franchise fees that are being paid to each jurisdiction. Okay, so next steps. Happy to answer any questions related to these documents. We would like to receive those recommendations on the proposed draft budget, incorporate any changes you would like to see on the final proposed budget. And then we will forward the final proposed budget to this LTF, and the Local Task Force members would forward a final recommended budget to their respective governing bodies for approval in April. For the county, we have already entered these numbers into the OpenGov system. And so unless there's changes, there's not much more needed from our Supervisor Curro.
Thank you so much. Before we bring it to the committee members, let's open it up to public comment.
Christina Chavez Wyatt, you have been unmuted. Please state your first, last name and county reside in, for the record. If you joined by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. This is Christina Chavez Wyatt, acting as a private citizen, a resident off of Sunny Slope and Fairview Road within the County of San Bonito. And my questions are if these budget includes projections for the siding of a transfer facility, a materials recovery facility, including scoping, planning, siding, EIR permitting, operations, and that there is no conflict of interest or nepotism within the contracting process? And then also, the status of the Landfill Enterprise Fund, expenses and income. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there more public comments? Selena, would you like to address a couple of those? Do you have more? No, no more. Just say no more public comment.
There's no more public comment.
Okay, great. And we don't have any from the audience? Just making sure. Okay. Selena, it's my understanding, before we bring it back and talk about some other stuff, but to address the public comments, which we greatly appreciate, this is not including any of the work that's being done with the sanitary solutions ad hoc. The sanitary solutions ad hoc is bringing forth in the next, like, did we say the second meeting in April?
March 25.
Oh, March 25. It's even faster than I thought. It was the second week in March. So March 25, we are bringing Supervisor Zanger and myself are on that ad hoc. We have been working very closely with staff and doing tours to come up with options for what a transfer station would look like, an area where it could be. Also, we've been looking at options of consolidating with other providers for service. So we will be having that on the 28th of March.
25th.
The 25th of March at the Board of Supervisors meeting. If you'd like to attend that, we'd love to get your comments. Then it does not, this budget does not include an EIR because we have not moved forward with any of those recommendations from the ad hoc. That would be a discussion for a later date.
And to address some of the public comments a little further, for the landfill budget, revenue, and expenses, this particular committee does not approve or advise on that budget. That budget has been prepared by staff, and it will be going through the county's normal process for approval by the Board of Supervisors.
Do you want to explain just a little that there are three types of budgets that you manage? Just to give a little more information. And then if the public have more comments, they can always reach out to you.
Yes. So we have three funds that are solid waste-related, and we've also been supporting with the county's sustainability efforts and grant writing and programs. But for the solid waste funds, we have our County Solid Waste Fund, which would include some of the unincorporated-only programs for litter baitment, illegal dumping, the county's share of our regional agency programs. All of the franchise fees that are paid directly to the county go into that fund and are tracked. Any staff time dedicated to those programs for the unincorporated county are within that fund. And then we have our second fund, the Regional Agency Fund, which would be this budget that we're reviewing today and for the Integrated Waste Management Act programs, AB 939 compliance, SB 1383 compliance, and so on. Then lastly, we have our landfill fund, which tracks the landfill gate revenue and any cost associated to the county related to the landfill. And of course, my staff time and staff time from a few of the other staff that were shared before.
Yeah, that's great. And we're only one of three of them, and ours is the regional agency. And that's what we're approving today. So if you'd like to, if the public would like to join the Board of Supervisors meeting, we would love to hear input about the options that we're gonna be presenting from the ad hoc to the board directly. With that, and I want to turn it over to my colleague. Do you have any questions or concerns?
No, other than the budget looks good. I can clearly understand it. I don't think I really have much. I know it looks like everything was stressed from what we talked about at our last meeting. Yeah, I don't have anything.
That's great. I really want to thank staff on this. I know it's not perfect. I want to admit right now, we even know from sitting down together, it's not perfect in the sense of how it's presented, but we're working with the software and we're working with the staff, and we're going to come up with a way where this, the most important thing to realize is that this budget performance report with the green column, the one on the very bottom, all the way down, all the way down, one more. That one with the green column? Yep. That one with the green column is the one that's entered into the ERP system, which is where it goes to the Board of Supervisors for adoption. And so when we get the adopted budget, that adopted budget will go in there. And then any expenditures will be shown in this report. There will be no Excel. There will be no manipulating of making sure it's simple to read. If it's not clear, we're going to adjust the budget by either adding, you know, expenditure lines so that we're putting the expenditures right where they need to be so that we can see the expenditures as they're expensed. And we're also discussing, I know it's very exciting for me, there's a column that's called encumbrances. I told you I'm a total geek. That's why I like this committee. Encumbrances line, and that encumbrances column is going to start being used this fiscal year, which is going to show the committed costs before they're spent. So what that does is it'll show us where the uncommitted costs are, and we'll be able to make decisions on any overs or extra revenue and being able to assign it to programs. That makes it much more transparent for the public. It also keeps it easier for staff. So I'm really excited about where we're going. And we do know that we want to have some future discussion about our agreement and maybe giving it a little refresher, but that's a future agenda item, so. But overall, I have no questions because I sat down with you. I do want to just point out, our fiscal year is July to June, for the public, right? July to June. The staff percentages are per the agreement. Is that correct? Or how are the percentages? That's just a question I have.
Yeah, the percentages were created in the last maybe five, five or four years based on actual time.
Oh, based on, like, you guys did like a time study of how much time you were doing on-
We did not do a time study. It's just, we could, we could look at that. But it's based on, you know, the number of programs we have and staff time estimated by staff.
So maybe with the agreement, looking at that, maybe we could have that added to the conversation for a future agenda item. And I already commented about the performance report. The reason the performance report, just to be completely transparent for the public, we're in the middle of a fiscal year right now. This, the only column that really matters right now is that proposed budget, that highlighted green column. Because once we start the new fiscal year, all of the new expenditures will be coming in there. And so the year-to-date will be all current. I just want to make sure that's how this is gonna work.
Yes. As you state that, you know, there are some GLs that we do not have access to on OpenGov. So you might see, you're not going to see any differences in the total, but you might see differences within the division. So the total amount in the division will stay the same, but because we're working to add more GLs to have the expenses hit the actual, just as an example, let me go to-
I was just gonna say, why don't we just do an example real quick?
So you'll see on 619 Services and Supplies.
So if we go to which page was that?
I think that's Page 3 for you, I'm looking at.
Page 3 of the one with the green bar. And it's Services and Supplies, okay.
Yes, right under the salary and benefits.
I don't think that's Page 3. We're on Grant Revenue. So I think so. Yeah, why don't you take one of those? I think we're on Page 4. Services and Supply at the bottom.
Yeah, Services, yeah.
Under the 619 group in-
Perfect, yes. So now I'm looking at the same exact packet that you have.
There you go.
So Page 4, Services and Supplies, that's where it starts. If you go to Page 5, that's where it ends with a total of 389,000 listed there.
That's, so just, just to clarify, sorry to interrupt you, because I like being able to explain this so the public knows. That is the total amount of Services and Supplies, that 389,000, which is your 619, and you call that a division?
No. The 3810 would be the division.
Oh, the 3810. Oh, I'm sorry. So what's, the 619 is not, okay, oh, so the 3810 is the division. The 619 is the what?
That is the account type.
The account type and then the breakdown within it.
Yeah, so like salary and benefits would be 610.
Okay, gotcha. I'm with you.
So for that, if you look at specifically 619.174, Services and Supplies is budgeted at 40,000.
I'm with you.
That is, but then you'll notice in the budget year-to-date transactions, there's money that's there, but no adopted budget. That is, for last fiscal year, that is because there is no GL access for our staff on the OpenGov system. And so we've been trying to get access from the budget team for the county. And I did meet with them last, this week. And so I'm hoping we'll get access before the budget is officially adopted. But again, the amount that you're seeing under Services and Supplies will not change the total amount, which is here listed as 389,000, but it will, it will change within the 619 accounts.
Okay.
Chair, if I may?
Please, right ahead.
Just help me understand here. So if you don't have the access to the certain GL codes, those funds are just frozen there? Or are you charging certain things already to a different GL code? Like, where is that going?
We are getting direction from the auditor's office at the county to charge to those GL accounts. And if it exceeds, at times when it exceeds a certain amount, sometimes we're needing to do a budget adjustment to move funds from an existing account to another. So we're trying to reduce staff time for that, but we're also trying to be more transparent with this LTF and the public so that we're having more exact numbers for each account within the division.
So they're working on this? They're gonna open you guys up to it? Like, or we're just creating new?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna get it where the team has the access to these, these other ones. So for example, if we're lumping it in the 40,000, which is the 619.714, but we really know it needs to be spread out under the ones below it that have $0 amounts in it. So if we're looking at these, and we know that that's where the auditor wants us to be posting those invoices, we're going to do an internal, which we, those are really easy ones, those internal budget adjustments where you take the 40,000, you spread it out so that you're actually posting them to the ones where the budget is. And then it won't look so weird.
Yeah, yeah.
It's weird right now, and I want to admit that it's weird. We understand it's weird. But we are moving forward to it being beautiful.
And this is, this is really the reason why we did not provide these kind of reports in the past, because these reports are actually a lot less-
It's already weird.
It's already weird.
And it just adds more confusion to the public. But what it does by explaining this and showing where we're going to go, because these will be the reports we get at our quarterly meetings that we will be able to start to see where the things are being corrected and start to see the benefits of utilizing the encumbrance system so that we can see where the uncommitted costs are. It's very exciting for me.
It's good, and it's good to hear that, that you guys were working on it. Because if there wasn't, then we needed to come up.
Then we were gonna need a talk. And I felt after having the meeting with staff and really sitting down and saying, and portraying where you were coming from, or Councilmember Morales was coming from, it's like, I hear what they want, and I know we can do it. We just need to sit down and kind of work through some of the little barriers that we have. And once we get through those, it'll work out great.
It's perfect.
Okay. The bottom line that I always, and this is how, because I'm sorry, as a former county employee, I had the same problems with access to GL codes. The bottom line is, when you're looking at these reports, if you're looking at the bottom line of 619, the Services and Supplies total that is showing the 389,000, when you're looking at the overall total, you never want to be seeing an overage. That overall, you may be over on a line up above here or there, but your overall total is not over. Our goal is almost to get it down to the line, line level, the GL line level. So that's our goal, and we're gonna stick with it.
We're gonna do it.
Okay. Go, team. So I don't have any other questions. Are there any questions from staff to us? Or, no? With that, this is our only item, so I make, is there a motion? Because we do have to make a motion to adopt the recommended budget. Is that correct? Did I have that right?
Yes, I would defer to Sean. I believe the way we worded it on the agenda is to just recommend on the budget. And then with that recommended final budget, it sounds like there's no incorporated request to make changes. So now we would simply forward the recommended budget to you. We typically do CC the city managers and applicable staff from each city in the county. And that would be to have those governing bodies approve it as part of their overall budget process.
Okay, so I'm assuming Sean, in Zoom land, Okay, so I'm assuming Sean in Zoom land, we do not have to make a formal motion.
I would still make a motion.
Still make a, a motion to-
Yeah, you would make a motion to recommend.
A motion to recommend, so that is what we need to have. Can I get a motion to recommend?
I'll make a motion to recommend the budget.
For fiscal year 25-26, right?
2025-26.
And I will second that. And with that, since we only have the two of us, there's any nays? There's no nays, because Dolores isn't here. So we will adopt that recommended and authorize it to go to the jurisdictions. And then if there are questions, we can be available to answer those.
Absolutely.
Okay. With that, can I get a, I'm gonna, we don't have to do motions to adjourn, right? We just say, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting. Okay.
It's the pleasure of the chair, yeah, however you like.
It's the pleasure of the chair to adjourn this meeting. Have a great night.
Thank you.